Oh, no. Oh, no. One thing that we want to point out is that as we balance this budget, we now know that hidden behind all of that deficit spending, there was a real need for new revenue at the library. Right? I think we can all agree on that now. I see that you are putting aside money potentially to run ballot questions next year to get the library this revenue. And this, the library is an incredibly important resource. It's not just about staff, right? I mean, we work here because we believe in it. It's definitely not because of the money. And so we, we need, we need new revenue at the library. And I want to say today that Pippa Wu is here to back you on this. We are here to support you, especially if you will go for that middle levy override, which is what we would ask, but even on the bond issue, we would be here to support you. And this is not some idle offer. If you want to look at the things that I've accomplished in this town with groups far smaller than Pippa Wu, we can sit down and talk about that, but we're here to get, help you get that word out about the importance of the library and about the importance of these, this new revenue stream for the library to keep us sustainable. Not just this year, but moving into the future. One thing that I have a feeling Aaron Salt and I agree on is that we should not wait around for Denver to find a solution to come and rescue us, right? We should be looking to do that ourselves here in El Paso County. All right. And a couple of other things though. So one, we saw that you brought back the sub hours. Really appreciate that. And I know you pulled that funding from a hiring that didn't occur or from gaps in the hiring. We know that's going to happen again next year, so we hope that, is this, that's not correct? We hope that you will continue to offer sub hours moving forward. And of course, there still is the request for there to be a change in the code of conduct to make it explicitly against library rules to attack someone based on the protected characteristics. That would help us when we're dealing with irate patrons to have that clear line drawn. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And you're doing a great job. Thanks, everyone.
Was there anyone else for public comment?
No more signed up, Aaron.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next are our reports. Friends of the Pike's Peak Library District, Ms. Rita.
Yes. So good evening. So in my report, I did put that Latina Voices was very successful. We had the best attendance in the 12 years that we have held that event. I think it was the Free Light Lunch. I have to admit that maybe it was because we were giving food away. So that was, that's one of our big events. But this past weekend, our fall book sale, oh my gosh, another breaking, record breaking event. We raised net, net after everything, thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. So that's after everything, taking out everything. That is one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars more than our March book sale, which also was a record breaking event. We did gain some memberships because we always have people who come in and get a membership so they can get the discount. So we made about four hundred dollars in membership, new memberships. And then in March, we had started to collect sales tax because before we sort of ate that and then had to take that out of our revenues. But we collected over the weekend over a thousand dollars in sales tax, which makes us able to keep the money. So we're just working hard to keep building, you know, building our revenues so that we can help PPLD. So that's it. Just good news.
Thanks, Rita. That was great.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Next is the foundation report, Mr. James.
Hi. Good evening. Any questions on anything that was on the report? So at right at the top of the report, a pretty nice estate gift from Evelyn Myers. You will see the exact same thing on next month's report. It is not an error. So we received a second distribution from the estate this month, which so totaling a hundred thousand dollars to support Old Colorado City. I always like to use these opportunities to remind everyone that you can always include the library district in your estate plans. It is a meaningful way to give and often it is organization's largest gift. So those were, those were nice gifts to receive. As I understand it, she was a longtime librarian at one of the libraries at the Air Force Academy. So I don't know if it was the cadent library or the medical library or the base library, but and just had an appreciation for the library.
How was the gala going? Numbers are we?
On Saturday.
I know. That's not what I asked.
We're, we're at about two fifty, but that, that number is moving.
And I had been asked what exactly that is supporting.
General operating.
General operating of the library.
Of the library district.
Somebody asked me if it was capital gains or capital investments. I said, I think so, but I was not sure.
No, I'm restricted general operating support that the library can apply to the area of greatest need. Great question.
Thank you. And I know it's a subject.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is our financial report. Randy.
Good evening, everyone. So looking at PTLD as a whole, our revenue is still showing a strong positive variance. And as you can see, most of that is due to our interest income. Just points of note, we, we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest in July, a hundred and twenty-eight, I believe in June, and a hundred and thirty-eight in August. So these last three, the summer months were killers. Our expenses are driving through about the same rate as before. I'm going to be putting through a budget adjustment in the November timeframe. So that would start with the IA meeting and, and then going on through to next month's budget meeting. So I will probably be making adjustments on, on certain areas that shown that they're basically not going to spend the money that's in there. So I'll reallocate that to other areas or we just take it to the fund balance. Moving on to general fund, very much the same picture. The revenue is, is basically the same number. As you notice, the expenditures are still being shown via our old format. Again, I'll get that changed over before the end of the year. I've hoped to have it next month, but that may not happen. So by December, I should have that changed over to our new format. We are currently operating under that new format. So the general ledger, as it exists, has been modified to move expenses to where they need to. I just need to make those changes on, on this report. Not going to spend a lot of time on expenditures. They're all showing favorable except for the two that have been in the negative. And I think those are probably just interdepartmental because we moved a lot of stuff out of there. So there's just a period of adjustment and figuring out how that needs to shake out. And that's on page four, by the way. Designated funds. Mostly, most of that should be getting offset by revenue in the, in the grants, which is over on page one. So we, we may have grants that are still pending. We were, most of that grant activity in, in revenue goes through the foundation. So we're, we're always on a little bit of a delay sometimes when we haven't been through their order meeting. And we've got one tomorrow. So we'll see some more revenue from that. Capital projects funds. The four point six million dollars that believe at the IA meeting earlier this month, that's one of the resolutions. That'll be adjusted down to like four point four million dollars total. But overall, our ending fund balance number is showing positive. Again, these aren't, it's hard to trend these numbers because it's really hard for Gary and IT, which are the biggest spenders on that, to kind of predict exactly when they're going to spend money. But I really, I expect those to kind of hang the way they are. Self-insurance. I, I really kind of expect this is going to be a favorable variance by the end of the year instead of like last year and the year before we were running hot. I think some of that was due to people staying away from the doctor during the COVID pandemic and, and then starting to go back again. And, and so I think that's probably normalized a little bit as far as people's visits to doctors and whatnot. So I, I really kind of expect we're going to have a, an ending balance that'll be favorable on that. And may, like I mentioned before, allow me to move four hundred thousand dollars I put in there last year back over to the general fund. The next sheet's just adjustments I've made so far. Obviously I'll be adding the one from today if that gets approved. And then we'll have another one for November. Do you have questions? That's all I've got.
Thanks, Randy. All right. Next up is the public services report.
Well, first I'd like to thank Sarah Sharples, the manager here at Sand Creek for hosting us tonight. And so if you haven't had a chance to look around this building, if you haven't been here before, she or I or one of her staff are more than happy to give you a quick tour. We have some unique things in this building. So September, we, we did a lot of reorganizing. And so the report reflects the, the former organization. So everybody, since it took place halfway through September, but next month you'll see a new report with a new public services. But any question?
All right. Thank you. Support services reports. Anyone have any comments or questions on that?
I don't know if Gary is, is in the room. Oh, okay. There you are. All right. It's the, the, the room screen is really small on my computer. For some reason, I'm trying to fix that. So can you kind of give us a, a quick update on the situation there for Sand Creek?
So I assume you're referring to the sewage.
Yes.
So we did, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a backup. Had Mr. Ritter out. They ran a scope down, actually got their camera stuck, which indicated that we had a break in the line. We did excavate and repaired, replaced about four and a half feet of, of the sewage pipe, the cats iron sewage pipe. And then everything back in, we did have another backup, a brief one. It wasn't from that, that location, but further down the line. At that time, the, the property manager showed up at the right time. Able to see some of the video that, that we had. So that they're planning on doing some hydrojetting of the entire system this weekend and running their own cameras down there to try and inspect the entire system. So they are at least making some, some moves to find out what the problem is and resolve it. So that's about all I have right now.
So do we know where our demarcation point is? You know, at what point do we, since we kind of, I'm assuming we own that building? At what point in that whole mess of pipes do we own? And then it's handed off to, I don't know, the landlord or, or the city or whatnot?
Pulling up all the construction drawings and everything, he's able to map it out. And, and the main does run underneath our, our location, which it's a common line. So it would fall under the cam charge, related to the cam coverage for the entire center. So really the only thing that we would be responsible are from our restrooms to the connection to that main and the kitchen that, that may, which not very long. Pretty much it's, it's really combined to the, the back end of the building, the, the east end of the building.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Gary.
Any other questions on the support services? I had a question for Justin. I'm assuming it's Justin, the informa cast. Are the board of trustees going to be looped into the communication cycles on that? Or does the board want to be looped into communication cycles like that?
That's just a question. That's, that's the question. If you want looped in, we can just, we can. There's many forms. You could have send your email, text. They will call you and have like a robotic message come in. So if anyone wants to be hooked up to that, we can, we can do any method or all methods, however you like it.
Okay.
You can also, you can also opt in, you know, we'll have multiple, multiple different types of messages go out. Maybe there's something that you don't want to get and there's something that you do. So we'll have a list and we'll show you, you can kind of opt in. And you, you have a great, your own profile. I think you can sign up for your own as well.
And then that would be.
Perfect.
It could be related to the state, think on what it is you want to be roped into. Because right now we're looking at just the standard creations that we're doing, not even personalized. There's like, there's a well over a hundred, probably a hundred and twenty of them that we've created as of now. So whether you want to be looped into something specific or with the whole setting, it's going to be pretty different.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate your work on this. I'm really excited about just getting out there. So thank you. Last call for support services reports. All right. Chief Librarians report.
Actually Gonzalez is here and I'll just wanted to thank him for coming to Penrose Library. I believe it was this week. Seems like it was long ago. And we had a very good conversation and also he gave some ideas to, to a director of regional history and genealogy, how we can better promote or market certain services that we have in our original history and genealogies. So thank you very much for finding the time and being there. I think he left now. So is there? Okay.
Thank you. I thought it was great. A, a great update and appreciated all the information I got. And, and, and putting up for, and you putting up for all my, my recommendations and ideas.
So no, actually he did mention, he looked at me and said, you just put up with me, but Michael took my ideas more seriously. So, but thank you for your, for your time. So we, we did have a very good tour. Penrose Library, Regional History and Genealogy. And today also I had meeting with Sally Clark, who came to Penrose Library. We, we had a very informative tour around like about the library and also regional history and genealogy. We did talk about different safety concerns that we have and how we want to be at the table with the city to work on those issues. So, and there are also some of the communications starting happening even today via my emails. So, and they understand and realize that challenges that we face at Penrose Library, it's not just the library issues, the community issue. So that was also very helpful. And I believe that we will continue moving forward to ensure the safety for our staff and all patrons there as well. So that's, that's in a nutshell. And also this morning I attended the breakfast that, that they honored Stephanie Porchin for their contribution to our community. That was very emotional, but also it was a good reminder that we are members of this community and we, we, we need to work together in order to make a positive impact. So that's in a nutshell. And do you have any questions?
How's Dr. Stoll doing?
I, the question was how Dr. Stoll is doing. I did call and left a message. I have not heard any stats. So I'm going to reach out to him again.
All right. Thank you so much. Let us know once, if you hear anything.
Thank you. Thank you. And also I would like to thank Councilmember Winat Crow Iverson for being here today as well. And Nancy Hanjan asked me to share her greetings and that she's, she regrets that she can't be here today.
All right. Thank you. All right. Board reports, Governance Committee, Mr. Taylor.
All right. So good evening. We did meet on Tuesday, the third. We discussed a few things. We did finalize our recommendations for the board position that will be vacated at the end of the year. I believe all of that information has been sent to our liaisons. And along with a copy of all of the actual applicants, including their resumes. So that information has been sent to both the city council and the commissioners for their review. It's kind of up to them to determine who they want to interview based on the information that we provided. And then I think we're looking at a November timeframe of, again, that all the timeframes that we put together are all in a draft format because it's just dependent upon when they're, the councilmen and commissioners are available to do those interviews. But the plan is, is that we would have interviews in November. The, both the boards would then approve, the council and the commissioners would then approve based on those interviews in the December timeframe. And hopefully we would get the new board trustee after the new year. So they would be able to attend the first board meeting in January. Again, that, that's all tentative at this point. We did discuss the conflict of interest, which is on the agenda for tonight. So we'll discuss that later on. We did have some preliminary officer discussions for next year. So I'll be reaching out to various board members to see what they would be interested in. And we also talked about evaluations for Tiona, the CEO. And we're looking at doing that, completing all of that in the first quarter timeframe instead of waiting till usually the second quarter is, is when we get around to getting that completed. So I'm hoping, hoping that we can get that done in the first quarter. I think that's it. Any questions? All right. Thanks. Back to you, Aaron.
Thank you, sir. Passing along over Internal Affairs Committee, Vince.
Hey, um, we had a nice, long meeting this, this October. I was just going over my notes here and looking back over, and we did have an executive session. I'm not sure if, I don't, we don't have listed here what the topic was. So maybe I'm just going to leave that as we took an executive session. And then we talked over the proposal for the hall operations, which Sammy's going to talk about in a little bit. I think she has it all wrapped up here, ready for us to see. And then we looked at two of the supplementary budget resolutions. So Randy will talk about those shortly. And then also the harvest contract, which maybe is also going to talk about later. Randy's busy, been busy. And so that was it for us this November, or excuse me, October. Yeah, no, it's not November. No.
All right. Any questions for Aaron? Okay. Thank you. Next we have our liaison comments. Commissioner Gonzalez, you have any, anything for us? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks. Now again, just a really good informative information. I've got the packets on the applicants, as you mentioned, for the board position and reviewed those as well. So I know the hard part is getting county commissioners and city council members together to, to, to do those interviews. But yeah, so I've, I've got that. And like the recommendations that you did provide. So no, thanks for all you do.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Crow Iverson, thank you for joining us. Did you have anything to share with us?
Nope. I just don't echo Commissioner Gonzalez. I have started reviewing them. I haven't finished them like he has. There's a lot of them. So I look forward to learning more about the process and I will carry on until I get through them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Next are our trustee comments. Let's start with Debbie or Scott. Do either of you have something?
Not me.
Nor do I. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll go to the folks in the big room. Any trustee comment?
None for me. None for me.
I guess I would just say I got to see the Holocaust exhibit at Mees. So I was really excited to make it to that. I don't know if the timeframe on that extended or if I just thought it did. But I, I thought I had missed it and then I was able to get it. And so I was really pleased to be able to, yeah, turn that exhibit and grateful we were able to have that. So that's about it. Unless you're really into Halloween decorations, the Manitou branch has like participating in Nanatu's like skeleton contest thing. So if you want to go visit our friend Skeleton at the library there, you're welcome to stop by the Manitou branch.
Awesome. Thanks. So I had the privilege of going to PPLD Con and speaking for a few minutes there. It was fun to see such an energized group. Everyone was really kind of excited and enjoyed being there. So it was a lot of fun. So I appreciate the invite to come and speak. Also, wanted to mention that I met with the Manitou mayor last week to discuss a little bit about the MOU. This was the executive session that Aaron mentioned, but so I won't go into details. But he and I seem to be on the same page as far as trying to, to move this along and that this is really the benefit to the community. And so we're going to, he was going to push on his side. I've already talked to Tiona. About a couple of things on our side as far as what we can do to help grease this kids. So hopefully we'll be, his goal was to have something for us to approve next month. Hopefully we'll quite get there, but we're hoping to keep some pressure on this and move forward with it. And then I wanted to wish Mr. Taylor a happy anniversary tonight. So thank you for joining us. Hopefully your wife's not upset with the fact that you're spending, greeting with us and not her.
No, she, she's fine.
Relaxing.
All right. Moving on to our business items, consent items. We have the minutes of the September twenty twenty-three, September twenty, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting and the minutes of the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees budget work session. We have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the twenty, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting. And can I do work, can I even together and work session?
Yep. Just one motion for the consent.
Second.
All right. Do you have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Next is decision twenty-three dash ten dash one, the hall operations missale.
Through all of the proposal that you all have, but I am coming back with the request that we phase out the public use of the hall for safety and security reasons, and we have a need for more staff office space. So what we've gone through and done at the last board meeting, you had requested a very tentative budget. So I will freely admit it is a rough budget with rough estimates. So if we are to phase out the use of the hall, and the reason I say we phase it out Um, if we are to uh phase out the use of the hall, and the reason I say we phase it out is we are committed to. Um, the request that the community has had. To use the space and we wanna fulfill those commitments, and so since they're allowed to make those requests six months out. It's a six month of phasing out. Before we can fully use it as staff space. So should we do that? You know, we'd have some limited costs. We have a plan for a department team to move into the hall. For their um office space, and then that will allow for some domino effect of a couple other teams to. Transition around into some other spaces as well. So I I would like to ask that you give that consideration and allow for us to phase out the use of the hall by the public. And I'll entertain any questions, of course.
Um, I I have a couple of, if. Um, so the first question that I have is. For those groups that do consistently meet there, I'm assuming that they have been notified that the. We're looking into this and. That they possibly may need to move to a different location.
We have not notified anybody since we were still waiting for a final decision to be made. But if they're on, they would have only reserved that space, the six months out. So they'll still have from now until the end of the six months to find other space. And typically, we do have space available at Penrose. Um, that Columbine Room uh hasn't been used as much, and so. We'll be able to make some recommendations of some other locations that can accommodate their groups, yes.
Okay, and the second question I have is is that with the six month phase out, I'm assuming that we wouldn't move any staff members if this were to. Be approved, we wouldn't move anybody in until after that six month period, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Just wanted to make sure that that was an accurate assumption I made. Okay, and by the way, thank you for putting those figures together. I know that it's not an exact number. But uh dealing with uh an idea of how much things would cost based on the two plans, so I appreciate what you and. Your staff did, Tammy, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
I move that the Pike Pike Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the Hall Operations as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up is decision. Yep, thank you. Decision twenty three dash ten dash two, Resolution for Supplementary Budget Capital Fund, Mr. Green.
Good evening, everyone, again. Uh, so. The the first resolution is basically to um. Reset the capital fund transfer I did at the beginning of the year in March based on a preliminary number, uh carry forward number. And. Since the audit has finished, that flushed out that the um combined. Fund balance for all of our capital funds uh was actually four point four million roughly. And the uh the preliminary number had been four point six, so basically I needed to adjust that. Fund balance down by two hundred and five thousand dollars. And so I worked through that process with uh with mostly Gary and and IT, and again. Um, unfortunately, they've got, they've got the most funds to do that kind of stuff on. Um, one other thing I wanted to point out, and you'll see this in the next month report, is um security uh. Has had a a large number in here as far as budgeted dollars, but it had never been broken out onto its own uh. Account per se, so um. You'll see a a fairly large credit out of IT capital. Six hundred and sixty six thousand, or I'm sorry, five hundred and twenty four thousand. And and that got moved over to a brand new um slot for security capital. So it'll be a little easier for um Michael to. Do his requisitions purchasing on that, and he's responsible for it, so this gives him a way to really see what's going on, and we can help him do that. Um, and and this, this is probably a process that that may continue into the future as long as, as long as we're uh. Budgeting lower dollars to capital to try to uh keep our our uh fund balance. You know, uh in the red. Um, in the preliminary budget, I I did show another million dollars like this one, but I I do plan on giving them a million dollars. And this one, we actually um went back and looked at older projects that had been out there for a while and um. To carve out a space for the new expenditure that we made last year that wasn't on new money but existing funds. And then, of course, um, this is all broken down by uh major department group. And then um for those that have locations or district-wide um appropriations, it's shown that way. Uh, Scott, I did, I did figure out that the the actual n- name for what we were talking about at the day of the preliminary um. Balanced budget meetings. It's actually Video Studio Capital. So I I think that does a better job of explaining what what it was we were we're asking for money on that. It's actually their their. Hardware and and equipment. And and the um. Video studio at twenty one C, that's the probably the biggest expenditure for most of this, but but that room, I mean, I've just got, it's fabulous. What what they've been able to do with limited funds, but that's what that would be for.
Any questions?
Thanks, Randy, for. Doing that.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, any questions or discussion? All right, could I get a volunteer? To read the resolution for us?
I'll do it.
But everybody all at once.
Uh, okay, I I could do it.
We have two, so uh or three, so everyone gets a chance here. I think uh maybe it's just two. Yeah, we got, we got time.
Okay, so do you want me to? Somebody else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Resolution for our supplementary budget, a resolution. Disappropriating a a sum of money previously carried over into the twenty twenty three budgeted. Capital Fund for Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado, whereas the Board of Trustees previously established a capital fund. The purpose of which is to account for all financial activity related to various capital projects. The funding of which comes primarily from the distribution of property tax revenue as an allocation portion. Allocated portion of the district's annual mill levy specifically earmarked for the capital fund as approved by the Board of Trustees, and whereas a total of. Three million six hundred twenty thousand five hundred seventy eight dollars of funds were carried over into the twenty twenty three budget by adopted resolution on February fifteenth. Twenty twenty three, based on best known information at the time of the adoption of said revolution, uh revolution, resolution. Prior to completion of the annual audit of the prior year's ending capital fund balance, and whereas the prop. Prior year's audit has since been completed and approved by the Board of Trustees at the July nineteenth, twenty twenty three Board of Trustees Meeting. In which funds available for carryover and appropriate appropriation to the twenty twenty three capital fund budget. Were reconciled and determined to be three million four hundred fifteen thousand two hundred forty nine dollars, resulting in a decrease of two hundred five thousand. Three hundred twenty nine dollars from the previously adopted carry carryover of three million six hundred twenty thousand five hundred seventy eight dollars. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Trustees of Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado, that the twenty twenty three appropriation of. The capital fund is hereby decreased from four million six hundred twenty thousand five hundred seventy eight dollars. To four million four hundred fifteen thousand two hundred forty nine dollars, as per the attached schedule adopted this eighteenth day of October twenty twenty three.
Thank you, give me a second. All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Hey, Aaron, so I I didn't make a motion. I just read it. So.
The re- I think the resolution is.
Okay.
Or do you not wanna move it?
Did you say the resolution was the motion?
Thought so.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. This one I know. Clarifications.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is the decision twenty three dash ten dash three, Resolution for Supplementary Budget General Fund, Mr. Green.
All right, so this this resolution is to um. Carry over our special revenue funds that have uh been in place for many years. And as e- each year progresses, we spend this down a little bit more. Um, and as far as the history on these special revenue funds, they're, they are designated funds. That um Gatski previously allowed, but but um. In the past, not too long ago, decided that they didn't want that accounted for that way. They wanted all this put up underneath the general fund. And everybody in the district knows those as our designated funds. Um, but the revenue and appropriated dollars that were in these funds at the time of that decision. Have had to been spent down. We can't just move them. So Gary basically is the one that that has um. Been involved in spending these dollars down. He's he did a pretty good job last year. I think we whittled it down another fifty. Uh, so we're now down to a total sum on this, I believe, of about sixty three thousand dollars. Most of it is in High Prairie Library Support Fund. Um, so Gary should probably be clapping, because I'm telling him to actually go out and spend some money with.
We already know he's a spender, so.
So that's kind of the history behind these, and and until we spend these down, I I will keep rolling these, basically carrying these forward. And um. He's been pretty busy with other things, so I I didn't carry him aboard before now because. It really hadn't been a need, but um we do have our final results, and I felt it was a good time to to do it after the audit was done. Um, the three locations that. And this has been this way for probably about three years now. Uh, Cheyenne Mountain's got a very small eight hundred and twelve dollars. High Prairie has got fifty thousand five ninety six. And Sand Creek has twelve thousand two hundred eighty three dollars. Any questions?
Hey, can we have someone read this resolution?
I'll read it. I love it. Resolution for supplementary budget, a resolution appropriating additional sums of money to be used from various funding sources. That are no not part of district's general fund for the Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Whereas the Board of Trustees previously authorized establishment of special revenue funds, de- designated purpose funds. The purpose of which is to account for all financial activity related to the accumulation of and the use of the. Of funds designated or restricted for specific purposes. And whereas certain designated funds that were budgeted for during twenty twenty two were not spent by the end of twenty twenty two. Yet the budgets are to be carried over into twenty twenty three as per the attached schedules. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Trustees of Pike's Peak Library District, Colorado Springs, Colorado. That district's special revenue funds, designated purpose funds, be adjusted for expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty three. By fund as identified on the attached schedules, adopted this eight eighteenth day of October twenty twenty three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, I guess.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is decision twenty three dash ten dash four, Contract and Scope of Work Documents with Forvis, Mr. Green.
Um, so so on this one, I actually did not uh. Do up a resolution for this. Um. This particular contract is with the consulting arm of Forvis. Um. We have um worked with them before, and it's specifically around the creation uh in the. Bringing active our ACFR module on the ERP system. Um, many of you probably remember we uh we were attempting to do that with the last set of financials we put out, and we got. Into a position where I basically had to shift gears and move us back over to the manual. Um, stipulating to um our auditor and the consultant that I was gonna pick this up later in the year and plan on having this. Um, project done before the end of this year, so we go into the audit season with this all set up and ready to go. Um. In our financial guidelines, we actually um management, uh that would be, I guess, Taon and I um. I could sign up to fifty thousand dollars on a consulting contract, and Taon, of course, would take over after that to a hundred. And then, of course, the board would do um over a hundred with a RFP. I included this in here, just I I wanted to inform you guys that there was activity with our auditing firm. Um, as they really work for you guys and and not for management, and and so this is. This is more of an informational kind of thing. I I needed to kind of get them moving on this, so I went ahead and actually signed this. Being it was uh twenty five thousand dollars. And um. So I could get into their schedule, because it's it's kind of tricky sometimes for, I can't just slot myself in there and say bump everybody else off. Uh. So that this is uh more so a a a informational kind of of. Delivery for this contract, just to make you aware that we're doing this and and uh with the. Utmost plan that this will be completed and ready to uh lock in by the end of the year.
And may I ensure that this also will assist us to streamline um our processes? That's the idea when it comes to the upcoming audits. For next year or so, and also financial statements, and ultimately it will impact uh the. Creating budget, so that will help us, it will be all in a uh system, and then uh the hope is we won't be. Doing a lot of work in Excel. I know, Renji, you love that, all of us do, but that's an idea, so and also it won't be a person dependent. So then, yeah.
I'm actually very much looking forward to this. Um. And one of the great things about this being in our system is we do um create paths over to our general ledger. And so the. Twenty twenty two locked in audited number is on our system right now, and that will be pulled into these statements and be sitting there, and every year this happens. It'll roll that locked in balance, beginning balance forward, and then. Paths will have been written on most things, and as we go through the year, we'd be doing new ones for new accounts, so um. My hope is that this is really gonna speed up the process of this and make it um like Taylor said. Something that isn't solely dependent on one person or even our auditors to come in and finish it for us. Um, the whole project can actually, we haven't done one yet, but from what our consultants from Tyler have shown us. We should be able to build the entire.
Right.
Hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy page um document out of um that module for ERP. Uh, the only other thing I'd mention on this is I had to come up with a number for for them to start their work. I landed on twenty five thousand dollars. That probably would have been our initial number if Kim and I were able to really take over the brunt of the work on this. I don't foresee that being the case right now. So um I did ask the auditor for a um. And the auditor being Steve Saucer, who also manages this person along with engagements with us. What he thought that number might look like, and he didn't think it would exceed fifty, so it might double it, that having. Their consultant do the bulk of the work for us and we're checking him instead of the other way around. And so that's that's where the fifty thousand dollar number that it came up with I discussed earlier came from. Any questions?
I I do have a question. So i- i- if I'm reading this correctly, this is really. Randy, you signed this document?
I did.
Okay, so I'm not sure why the board would be brought into something like this, because the contract is not with the board. We approved the RFP to select a contractor to do this work. But I'm not sure I understand why we as a board would approve the contract.
Well, that's what I was saying at the beginning, it it wasn't really for a resolution, the way it was worded on there. Um it was it was an informational um thing for me to deliver some information to you guys, because in the end, they do work for you. And I try to advise you when there's something big like this going on with the audit firm, so you're aware that. That this is going on with them and and ultimately they'll be talking to you about it. Um so that that was probably just as far as it being on there as a resolution, that was a misstep between um Laura and I. And and you know, probably more on my part. So I agree with you that it's not really a resolution, it's it's more um bringing you guys into the loop on something fairly large. Um that I just felt you guys need to be informed about.
A- and I appreciate that, and and that's kind of what I was kind of figuring based on what I've read and stuff like that, so. Um not sure how we can move forward with with this decision item, because it's not necessarily a decision item, but it's more of a discussion item.
We can amend the agenda and have this listed as a discussion item. Uh under, uh we just change it to. Uh discussion item twenty-three dash ten dash four. Or we can move it to five and make decision, uh the conflict of interest statement dash four, so we lump over. Uh decisions together and then have our discussion items. We've already heard this, uh but we could just mark it as a decision or a discussion item on the agenda, and then no action is taken. Okay, just leave it as a decision, just say no action taken.
Okay.
There's no motion, there's nothing plus or minus on it.
Right, it 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 whatever, in order to be accurate with uh. The rules, um however, or whatever makes it easier, if it's easier just to say, let's just make this a dis- a a discussion item instead of a decision item. Then I guess we can make that motion, and I'd be happy to make that motion. Okay.
Does that work for everyone else?
All right, I'll make a motion to. I was just, I'll just do it, uh I I make a motion to change the decision twenty-three dash ten dash four item to a discussion item. With the uh title discussion twenty-three dash ten dash four.
Second.
All in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, thank you, Scott, thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Randy on the Forbes contract? All right, hearing none, we'll move to decision twenty-three dash ten dash five, conflict of interest statement update, Mr. Taylor.
All right, so this was one of the items that we spent some time on during our last governance uh meeting. Um we did make some changes to the document of and we updated. The biggest change that we made to this document was is that it it is specific to uh Board of Trustees. Um the previous documents included the foundation, the friends, employees. And we felt like this is something that really needed to be for just the trustees. If those other organizations uh being the foundation, the friends, or even um a- as part of uh well. The HR process would be completely separate from this, but if the foundation and the friends were to adopt something like this, then that would need to go towards. Their boards and they would need to adopt this. But this document is only for the Board of Trustees, uh this is something that uh has not been updated for some time. So we took it upon ourselves to do that this year, um we do not need to fill it out until after the first of the year, because that says January twenty twenty-four. So this will be the new uh conflict of interest um item that we will be uh approving for tonight. I can't remember, uh I apologize, uh did we send out the red items, um the markup? For the document?
No. No.
Okay.
So I Scott, my uh I had a question on what was changed, if anything was, and I tried to pull up. But uh now that I'm reading it and you went over that, uh so everywhere it said that from the old. Uh accomplice of interests, wherever it said between a member and any one of the three, you just changed all of that to the Board of Trustees, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, what? Were any of? That we fill in, were they, were there any changes in that one in those numbered items?
I tell you what, let me do, let me do this, uh I'm going to try this um. I don't think I can, um I'm not able to share on this, am I?
I can make, I can let you share.
That would be great, because then I can show. Show the changes that we kind of made, and that might help. There we go. Um conflict of interest, I'm hoping I'm sharing the right one. All right, and I'll make this as big as I can. Hopefully you guys could share or see this. Um so yes, we removed a lot of the the three uh references to foundation, friends or employees. We removed those throughout the document. Um in addition, we changed the executive director, chief librarian and CEO to board president. Uh we did look at um the accept gifts. Um statement that is in item number one in excess of fifty dollars, because there wasn't an amount there, so. It could have been anywhere from a dollar. Um or fifty cents even, so we wanted to put, uh we put a dollar figure in there. Again, a lot of the foundation friends and employees were removed from the document. Let me see, on the second page, which is where we as trustees would. Clear um select none or fill out that information. The one that we did make some changes to was number six. Um and we asked for additional details, removed a lot of um have you ever been disciplined or cited? Um we wanted to just have um the information down here, just input the information um if you have. And again, item number seven had to do with the excess of fifty dollars being the gifts. Um and that has pretty much been it, um I'm sure we'll try to get this back to a couple pages. Because that that's just kind of a hangover, so there might be some formatting changes that will happen, but uh. This is uh the updated document.
So the non-red line is on just two pages, so I think it's just having all of those other pieces pulled out, because you have.
Correct.
Both the ads and the subtractions in there.
Yeah, there's, the ads are on there too, um it's just kind of hard to see, and and I'm sorry, I can't see exactly, I made it a hundred and fifty percent. If that's too small, then you know, just let me know, I just don't wanna, I don't I don't know how big it is in the room.
I zoomed in a bit, but we're losing a little resolution, so.
Okay. Um I can send this out, um or we can send it, uh Laura can send it out to the rest of the trustees. But the one that is in the actual um agenda, um the board packet is the. Updated version without the red lines. Okay, does that help? I hope.
Yes, that that's great, thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else on that, any questions or anything?
Scott, is it your intent to vote on this tonight? It's marked as a decision item, but the way you said, send out the red line version to everyone.
Well, I mean, the the board packet actually has the updated version. Um if we want to, if the board members wanna defer it till next month, that that's fine, again, we're not gonna be. Filling this out until after the new year, but if um they wanna, you know, defer it till November's. That's fine, and um we can send out the updated or and the redlined markup if we want to. I'm, I can go either way.
I've read it, it seems appropriate to me, and I was curious what was changed as well. Like Dora, but I don't see an issue.
So the uh all the changes, if we need anything, we go to the board president, because this is for the Board of Trustees. That's why you took out the CEO and chief librarian, am I?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Scott on this? Does everyone feel comfortable voting on it, or would you like to postpone this? Until November, so you have a chance to read the red lines, Dora?
No, I I'm fine, I was just wanting to clarify some things, because I pulled out the other one from last year, because I'm a hoarder on things. And uh I pulled it out and I'm going like, I wonder what they changed from each, and that's what I wanted. But I want a clarification on when you put in president, and that was because this is a trustee doc- document, which makes more sense.
Correct, yep.
That's good, we could vote on it.
All right. Well, if there's no other comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve?
Uh I moved that the Pike's Peak Library District Board of Trustees approved the conflict of interest statement update as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? All right, motion carries, is there any additional business that we need to tend to tonight? All right, thank you all for being here, this meeting's adjourned.